They're saying it's an allergic reaction that turned into bacterial infections. Michelle thinks it's from her bedroom. She got sick, I got sick, now Karen's sick.
I was stripping.
Which, I don't really think that's what it was. Oh, it's unrelenting. But even though that's the worst thing.
If you jump in first. What I'm saying is, we're gonna be out here fifteen minutes. You'll need to, somebody will need to make a motion.
Do that first. I'll make a motion to approve our hearing.
Let's pledge allegiance.
Like allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
How about the minutes of the regular of January fourteenth?
The policeman had something and you were going to...
I think that was on him being able to train other people. We just needed some...
Well, I thought he was gonna come up with a policy.
The policy, but then something about the training manual. Do you have a full training manual?
I don't think I see you. I think Mark was doing something. I'm just kidding. I just read that for my class.
So you don't...
I don't.
Well, is that, that case of policy been passed?
I think they weren't gonna be able to hold on until these two things together.
We talked about making this amendment. And, yeah, amendments in the manual.
Right.
But what needed to be done to do that is what I'm not clear about.
That's a question that's a lot of, we just can't keep that and the manual together.
I think the council should, at some point, vote to approve the policy.
Maybe no, the council hasn't even looked at the policy yet. No, I haven't seen that paper.
Okay.
I mean, so maybe nobody else has either.
Well, Mark, the support is supposed to give. Cause I can give to you a copy if you want to.
Now, did everyone take a look at it? Probably, I don't know. Especially, still, they should, they should look at it and vote. Just the first policy.
Check your ballot.
I'm gonna spell out page four and the third paragraph. So Doug Eagles, it should be, yeah, under police chief. Third line down, at least she, it should be Terry Eagles, not Doug Eagles.
And this isn't a correction. On the fourth page also, it says, Star, the Star County government determines. And we just, we did not get that on the agenda. That will be on the agenda next month because I have booked it. We can't vote. We can't vote. We have time, but we'll, we'll wait next month to address that. Top of the, very top of the page. So I will look into information if we can, on finishing business.
Can I ask you a question? That should be Doug Richards, not Terry Eagles.
No, as part-time police officer.
I know, but Doug was appointed as part-time police officer. Terry already was.
Well, but I think he did say Terry in that when he spoke to Doug, he gave interest in doing something once in a while. But I, I don't...
Yeah. Yeah, just the name change from Doug to Terry. Make a motion to approve of January fourteenth.
Will you give a second to vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. City clerks cash received a call.
Total cash receipts for the month of January, seventy thousand, seven hundred, eight dollars and forty-nine cents.
Can I make a motion that we approve the cash receipt?
Aye.
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 How about approval of submitted claims? We can give either one. We just, we might want to report the city boys. The committee chair. Anybody have a report? Shane?
The only thing I have to report this month is we're relocating some water lines up the elevator due to the fact that we have two new dams that should be in the Tep district. So we're being very cooperative with the elevator in that particular incident. And recently, it was just a pretty quiet month. Unless somebody has a question for me. Thank you.
The only thing I have is there might be some classes coming up that we might attend for water billing and payroll updates and stuff. In March. As far as the park, there's been some questions. How about Teresa working together to model through and figure out? Make sure that we're handling everything properly and...
Do we need to say what they are? Do we need to say what they are?
Um, well, we all got a letter from last month. From an attorney. It doesn't necessarily say what we're doing is wrong. It just kind of spells out different things. I still have a lawyer somewhere. So, yeah, we're just basically verifying that things we're doing are...
The tip will have to be on the agenda next month.
Now, pretty, pretty, pretty quiet. We're getting our money in from the state and bills are staying pretty good, so it's really quiet there, too.
And I don't have anything on the cemetery either. Now, you wanna approve submitted claims? Any questions on, if anybody has any questions on... Payroll or claims on the... We did, we had Doug Irwin on there for our audit. And we have our casers on there. Because we ran just a little, and still not bad, but a little higher than the general fund, but we had the audits and the taser. And we did have to, we had the heater. We had to take care of that down at the street department buildings. That ran a little some money. I'd make a motion to approve that submitted claims. Let's vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Now, the liquid water bill. Now, Donna couldn't, Donna couldn't make it tonight. So... We've actually, from when, does everybody have the, the new, from what was in your packet? We've taken about three thousand off of there. We've knocked a lot off the, a lot off the three or more bill column. And I believe we have, shame not to put you on it, we flagged then.
We've tagged everybody, had it every night. So we can use approval on the ninety days.
I'll make a motion to shut off on all accounts over the last few days.
I second the motion. Discussion?
So that was both, that was the motion to shut off, not just tag.
Right, they've already been tagged.
What I have is, what I have is, also the next one, this water billing procedures. I prepared a proposal ordinance based on instructions from the council last week. And I know that Donna wanted that out at this meeting with the council review. Wasn't intended to be passed at this meeting, so I think I can hand out a copy to all council members. If anybody else wants a copy, let me know and I'll be glad to get you one. And I think it states where she indicated at the last meeting as far as billing out the dates. Bills would be murdered by ten, a month, it would be due by the last day of opposing business on the last day of the month of the same month. payments due, made after due date, subject to a ten percent penalty. delinquent accounts, cause a lien could be filed as soon as an account is delinquent. That when account is past due and deemed delinquent, the city clerk is authorized and correct to give the owner or occupant or user the city services notice of the account. Unless the account is paid in full within seven days, the mailing of notice services will suddenly premises. So he's tagged for shut off and terminated forty-eight hours after paying. Terminated services would not be reinstated. Until a business day, all past due amounts, including any penalties and costs paid in full, along with the fifty dollar reconduction fee. And reconduction might not occur until the following business day, full payment is not received. In any event, I know Donna wanted, council will look it over and let her know if anything, any questions, or let me, or ask me, and take this up next week.
Oh, I have something on energy aggregation.
All right, we can see everyone again. We have a better, Integris Energy Services. Got some information for you. I'll try to keep this brief. When I was here a couple of months ago, I was here to talk about electric aggregation and the possibility of the city of Tewaunaw and the Tegris Energy Services working together. Since then, I've talked a little bit with Mayor Collins, worked with Teresa, just hit the ball rolling with communications with Amhern and the utility on possible next steps. I'd like to talk about some possible next steps and reconsideration and agreement between the city and Integris to facilitate an offer to residents for the electric aggregation that was referenced and passed in November, obviously. And there's a couple of steps from here that the city will to move the program forward to give people an opportunity if they decide to participate to save some money on their, on the electric portion of their Amhern bills. What I have in, in the packet, left-hand side, is some slides about this. Just wanna touch on four things. The plan of operation and governance, pricing, and we call it, we give sample pricing for you. The community support, so the services that we're offering, and then the timing consideration to get, to get the program started. So, start with the, with the plan of operation and governance. This is, a plan is required by statute by law to, to have a program. So before it offered, if we made, the city would have to adopt a plan that's basically, you know, it explains what aggregation is. What happens if somebody goes out of the city? What happens if they live in? Can they participate in an aggregation program? Explains things like there's outages, then Amhern will still respond to those. They're still the delivery company. And what we'd like to propose is working together. We can provide you with a sample plan. There has to be a couple of public notices and two public hearings. So people can have an opportunity to ask questions about it, have input on the plan. And we can help the city through that entire process of providing with the notices, coming out and participating in the, the public hearings. And then that plan must be approved by, by ordinance. So, for the pricing of the program, I just jumped to page five here. Remember what we call big up pricing, again, working with Teresa to get, to get some data from, from the utility. And the pricing is about four point three cents per residential, which is about twenty-one, twenty-two percent savings. Four point seven cents per small commercial, which is about the same percentage savings. The support we can provide in the city is, we entered into an agreement, we would immediately establish a whole renumber that's dedicated to, to the city so the residents can find information, they can get a live agent, semester, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. We would also establish a OLEP page. That would have all the city's information as far as the plan of operation and governance, the different rates, the terms of conditions for residents and small businesses. So one space where you can find all the information straight out of line. And we would provide reports to the city on things like saving days, that was specifically quarterly. So the, the timing of this is, what I did is I looked at the possible start date in the beginning of May. So that way, as the summer's coming on and people are starting to run their air conditioning, it's anything like last summer especially, they can have an opportunity to save electric, our, their bills. So, on page eight here, put together a proposed calendar. So there's, again, there has to be public, public notices that could go on the Star County news. There has to be the public hearings, the plan that to be approved. We need to, so we have an agreement on pricing. And then, the, there has to be time for printing to get the letters ready. And then there's what we call the opt-out period. So the letters are sent to people's mailboxes and to small businesses. And then they would have two weeks to respond, so it's an opt-out program. If they opted out, they're out of the program. Or they can, like, stay in the program. And then after that, there's timeframe. There has to be eighteen days for the meet or read date, where you can enroll people. So, but it is try to, try to back it into really how quickly this can start so that there's savings opportunity for the summer bucks. And the program can start at the end of April, April of the month. So, the, the point of that is if the taser missed, if it goes to another month or something like that, you have a June first start. So in the packets, I have some information about Integris. I've covered a lot of that last time, I think. But then the right-hand side of that, of that folder is the Integris and city of Tewaunaw agreement review. And if this is something... No, no. If this is something that, that you should consider or adhere into, give the program a start quickly and help all the steps along the way.
Kevin, we have, the public hearings happen before we can make an approval, correct?
If, if you approve to, that is the tricky part about this schedule is that if you approve to work with the Integris, it would have to be before March eleventh, otherwise it would push that along. So it's, you have to make your discretion. If you, if you decide to work with the Integris on, say, March eleventh, then we could have the public hearings and the plan on the...
I have one other question, too. I believe, I know the county's a different program, but I believe with some sort of, we haven't discussed that, but is there any, any type of, I know there's a savings for the people, but is there anything that the city, is there any rebate or anything that comes back from using you?
That's, that's at the discretion of the city. Some communities have elected to, to have a per kilowatt fee. That would be passed through back to the city.
Okay, explain that again.
So, if, typically, it's a tenth of a penny. So if a rate is, let's say it's four point three cents per kilowatt hour, it would be four point four cents per kilowatt hour. And the, that tenth of a penny would be reversed to the city's monthly.
But it goes on the public's, a tenth goes on everybody's.
I have a question for Donna.
Sure.
If they free go with you, will we lose our franchise fee with Sylva?
There's, it doesn't affect...
Doesn't affect any...
No, doesn't affect any, or if you have free power, because you allow them to use facilities, things like that, it doesn't affect them.
I just have a comment. I'd like to see the city do something on this, cause I really think, prior to the November election, the city should have been doing the research and finding companies like Integris. And so once the ballot measure was passed, they could proceed right away. As the gentleman said, we're already looking in May, possibly June, as we've done tonight. I know people in the county, in the unincorporated areas, are very happy with their energy savings, they're saving anywhere from fifty to a couple hundred dollars a month. When they're having energy uses they are, so whatever company you may go with, it can evolve a little quicker.
I agree. We've been, we've been talking and, and Amhern, we've said, let's wait. And Amhern hasn't sent anybody, nobody else has. Part I know has, has shown an interest, so...
And everybody you talk to, it sounds like they're all very comparable.
Right, so I, I agree. I think we need Bruce to back. Then a vote, basically. That would have nothing to do with the ordinance. That will come later, after the public meetings and how we...
Right, you definitely have, you definitely have a vote here. I mean, this, this does not include rates, those are not coming.
Right, right. Just that we wanna move, that we wanna move forward. I, I agree with this and we've gone too long. So I, I make a, I make a, I would motion to Bruce that, that we wanna move forward as Integris with our partner.
They would, you would, they would vote to enter into this aggregation program review, is that right?
That's right.
I make a motion that we, that we enter into the agreement with Integris. Discussion?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye. Mayor's not here, I mean, that's okay. So we can now proceed. You can you'll work with us on getting the notices out then for the public, things like that.
Yes, absolutely. We need the the agreement and we could also start to to get pricing to be this week. We do have the municipal files and I'm glad you brought up that point. I looked at the numbers, it's just in just in that first month, it's about conservatively fifteen to twenty dollars per household city, so.
The cleanup and stuff with Amrin has been done and completed and they have sent that all back. And I sent Kevin then the two reports that they told me to print off and send them in so he knows where we're at with all that. And I sent the referendum to her today, too, so she knows where we're at.
That being said, I don't Teresa has got that, not dumped in her lap, but has done a ton of work on on that. There was quite a bit to do with with Amrin that that I don't think we knew about with having to clear those hurdles. I just assumed that we could tell them, hey, no, but but she got all that done, so. Bruce, if we voted this in, would that be whose signature would we need on?
Yeah, I think it's on page seven.
That's right.
Yeah.
You have to make a motion about getting a rebate?
No, that'll come with all of our terms.
Can that come, right.
Because I suggest that you do because you you have some administrative costs that you need to recoup.
Yeah, that's something that the council will need to consider. And start thinking about it's the weather or not. Whatever, it doesn't have to be. But whatever amount that he would want.
Right.
And like, you know, because right now I don't know. I saw a number to which numbers we're talking.
And Kevin, you went into this. I mean, we do we need to vote on that or is that something that can be put in?
No, that would that could be determined when the pricing's done. And we could we could go through different options and. Absolutely.
Yeah, it might be premature to do that without knowing what the other prices are. All right, so you need how many to be signed soon?
I just need one of them, I would get her sign.
Am I hiring five? And I want you to sign every letter with a different.
So as far as next steps, should I get touched with Teresa?
Yeah, that would be. Now, we have your numbers. We pass that out and power goes out and we'll become your your. Your cell phone, no, I'm gonna see.
I didn't even put the power going.
Yeah. So are there any public concerns? Thank you, Kevin. Anything else? Boom, is that given session? Yeah, carry that one.